All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Berlin Select Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 10th. We continue to meet virtually because of COVID. Let's see, where are we? So we have a call to order. It is 7:01. We're a little bit late because we were chit-chatting. On the announcements, meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television access channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and/or phone number may be recorded. So this is an annual event where after the elections, we do a select board reorganization. So I can say that I had a blast being Chair. Very unconventional. You know, thank you to Kristen Scott for always keeping me on track and reminding of things that I just would skip over for that. So having that, it is time to do some Chair movement. So I recommend that Mr. R. Scott Hawkins take the role of Chair. Can I get a motion?
I thought you were making the motion.
No, I made the motion. See, this is why things need to change.
I guess you made the motion, so I'm gonna second it.
All right, so all in favor? Aye. Stone Aye. There you go.
Keefe Aye.
All right.
I think then that we're open then for, let's see, nominations for Vice Chair.
All right, I vote Chris Hawkins. Jesus God. Chris Keith.
I can see how this night is gonna go.
I make a motion to have Chris Keith step up from Clerk to Vice Chair.
I will second, even though Chairs don't often do that.
That's all right. Sure they do. For this.
Is there any more discussion? Then we will vote Hawkins Aye.
Keefe Aye.
Stone Aye.
Chairs. How many weeks is it gonna take us to get the new order of voting down? I think that now leaves us to nominations for Clerk.
I will make a motion to have Peg be the Clerk.
I will second that motion.
I decline.
I'll give you Chair back.
No, no.
If there's no more discussion, it will take a vote Hawkins Aye.
Keefe Aye.
Stone Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right, so.
I have to watch the agenda now closer.
Yep, Chris, you're gonna change your nomenclature down the bottom. You're now Select BP. Okay.
Well, you know.
She has had it say Chair for almost a year now.
Yours was correct, though, because we somehow ours got switched, right?
No, I got booted back. All right, Mr. Chair.
I believe then we're on to approval of minutes.
I will make a motion to approve both the April and April 25th and the May 2nd open session meeting minutes.
I will second that motion.
Is there more discussion about minutes? Seeing none, Hawkins Aye.
Keefe Aye.
Stone Aye.
Oh my goodness, this is gonna get tough on this order of voting. Whoops, I closed the agenda. Is a town administrator, is there correspondence tonight?
Look, you're muted. I'm trying to control my talking. There, the, we did receive an email this afternoon that I responded to. It was from Mary Porter regarding the approval of the LAU units or the LAUs at the Highland Ridge development. And I clarified to her that the LAUs do not, are not a transfer or reduction in the number of units on site. They are based on the original subdivision approval. So there are 66 units and 10 will be LAUs on site. So I just clarified that. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
I think that moves us on to general public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who has a public comment? You should raise your hand if you would like to. So I think not seeing any, we have moved us on to hearings and since they are time stamped on the agenda, and we're four minutes ahead, is there something else to quickly jump to?
I'm happy to fill the slot that Chief Clerk would have taken. He's unable to make it tonight. I can just do my TA report if you'd like. Want to bump that up or do something else?
Do you think you can do a TA report in, yeah, do the TA report? Because I think since if you want to include anything from Chief Clerk in that, that would be great.
I can, I can do that. Let me see. Okay. So first I want to note that the ALS, the ALS study, we've been provided a working draft from MRI. The Chief and June and I are now looking at it. June and I have met. We've reviewed the entire draft and have several comments and questions on it that we're turning back to MRI to polish up the report and make sure that it answers all the questions that the town wanted answered on the report. So within the next couple of weeks, I would expect that we're gonna have to be scheduling the presentation to the Select Board. So we'll move on then. The next thing I have is that Mastod has released a new funding program that was approved by the Governor just in April of this year. And that is called, it's called the RAP Program, Winter Recovery Assistance Program. And it's a formulaic allocation of funds for all Massachusetts municipalities, and it's through a reimbursement program. Berlin's portion will be $141,106.17. And I've notified Fred of this and asked him to start looking into it. We are going to have to execute the state contracts on this program. And the program is very restricted to certain roadworks, so it is only a couple of of road repair and upgrade categories that we'll be able to do. But Fred, when Fred heard about it, he was extremely happy to get this additional funding. And the next thing I have tonight, what I really, oh, I'm sorry, the House Ways and Means actually came out with a budget proposal today. Just a couple of highlights. The Senate is looking at a significant increase to Chapter 78 and a 29, it's 29% increase in the state-owned land pilot program. So obviously, we benefit from both of those things, either directly or indirectly. Unrestricted general government aid, the Senate Ways and Means Committee is proposing a $63 million increase in what we call UGA or a 5.4% increase over FY22, and the Governors had proposed only 2.7% increase. So at the very least, we can, I think we can be assured that our state aid is not going to fluctuate down. And we may actually see increases from what we projected for the budget FY23. And the last thing I have is my list of to-dos that have to be done on a very short timeline. And as you can see, three quarters of this page is procurements. And I have prioritized the procurement to those that must be issued by June 30th. And I've got 10 of those listed at the top. I've listed some ongoing and older appropriations that require project procurements. And I have listed six other procurements that have either just been approved for FY23 or will not be finalized in FY, in FY22. There is an awful lot of work that goes into every single procurement. There are many, you know, some of the larger procurements require, you know, they could be 40 pages long, you know, 20 to 40 pages long. Others, some of the low-hanging fruit might just require us to follow best business practice. And we've got a couple of those scattered in, thankfully. So I am going to be starting, one of the biggest ones I'm gonna be starting on here and trying to get issued is, I'm gonna try to issue the air handler, the town office's air handler replacement and the EPDM roof replacement simultaneously. So an attempt can be made to coordinate that work. We don't want to see a roof go on and then have holes punched in it to put an air handler up there or vice versa. So I'm gonna try to issue those simultaneously. The other, of course, another big one is the Recreation Court upgrades. And I think the Recreation Committee has settled on a project scope. And that went around a little bit, and I think they've settled on a project scope that we can actually specify in the in the scope of work for that project. So there's a lot, a lot to be done. And in addition to that, I've got, June and I are working with the Personnel Committee on the Personnel Policy Manual Updates. We're gonna be updating the Personnel Action Form, the Employment Application, and the Organizational Chart. I also have a Category Z workbook that's, that needs to be submitted to FEMA on COVID reimbursements for labor costs. The Berlin Memorial School Lease Agreement has been hanging out there. We gotta finish that up. We've got to do a shared bucket truck inter-municipal agreement with the Town of Clinton because we are expecting that truck before the end of this fiscal year, we hope anyway. And then finally, we've got some ongoing grants administration that we need to make sure we're up to speed on. And we close out certain grants, certain FY22 grants by the deadline on June 30th. That's it. I don't know, I don't know how much I left out. I'm sure I left out some things, but I, I just wanted to try to hit the.
I imagine this is a living document. Does new things come up and as things get, either we decide it's gonna be deprioritized or completed? It can come off. Chris, Peg, do you have questions?
No, I don't think so.
I foresee myself dedicating at least, at least eight hours a week, at least eight hours a week on procurements from here on out. So, and it's probably going to be more than that.
Margaret, what is the level of work that's good for you in the hiring of a replacement town administrator?
There's not a whole lot of work. We're gonna be talking about that under TA search updates. So there's not a whole, a whole lot of work on my part, other than coordinating things here. Otherwise, I mean, the recruiters are doing the vast majority of the, of the legwork here.
We're at 7:13. Margaret, if you want to just add to the record why Chief Clerk might not be, what we can say, and it's on the record.
Unfortunately, I don't have a reason, but I do know that there were sirens blaring a little while ago. And I don't know if it has something to do with an emergency response, but I received late, late notice from him.
Were you thinking of rescheduling him or is there something on his report worthy of?
I, that I can't, I can't answer. I think I spoke a little bit to the ALS study, which probably was on his report. And I can't, I can't speak to his report itself. We'll probably have to reschedule him, Scott.
Since we're not then at 7:20 yet for the Department, the Board of Health presentation, let's keep going down the agenda. Talk about the supplemental funding request for the Bullard House.
Yeah. All right, so back in December of 2021, the Board approved 500, I'm sorry, $750 in funding to install a new threshold at the Bullard House. And I'm going to ask the Board tonight to amend that vote because it was noted in the minutes that it was for Cronenberger and Sons. The vendor now is Ford Ogden of Architectural House Rights in Lancaster, Mass. And the cost is $1,250. So I ask that you amend the vote taken on December 13th, 2021 to change the vendor to Architectural House Rights and to add $500 of funding from the 2016 Special Town Meeting Appropriation for Bullard House Renovations.
So moved.
And seconded.
Any other question or discussion? If not, we'll start voting Hawkins Aye.
Keefe Aye.
Stone Aye.
That motion passes. 7:16, so we still have a few more minutes to go. I'll go to next on the agenda, the draft fiscal year 23 Select Board meeting calendar.
Well, I just had a question. Scott, was it you and I who were thinking of weekly meetings?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we talked about bi-weekly meetings. I think we ended up thinking more weekly. And I even have some suggestions to amend that, to find, I thought a decent compromise between the weekly and bi-weekly stuff. And if I could, as Chair, just jump into discussion on my own. I usually go first, but I'll share what I was thinking. I was thinking we would schedule weekly, but on weeks of Monday holidays, not meet at all. Because I worry that when we meet on Tuesdays like today, where it might have been needed, because I don't want to get too many weeks in a row. But the staff don't have very long to respond to things before we meet again. You know, if we meet Tuesday night, it's three business days before we're meeting again. And, and especially an agenda setting two days earlier. And so if we skipped the weeks of holidays, and then when I do agenda setting or the Chair does agenda setting, we would look to see if there are weekly meetings that there's just nothing worthy of meeting and that we would cancel those. Because I, I share the concern that if we go every other week, we might end up with meetings that go late. And, and we all get a little punchy in that 9 to 9:30 range. I'd hate to start seeing us regularly go later than that.
Yeah, and possibly if it does start to run long, maybe we relook at it or something.
No, I was thinking going weekly and canceling as opposed to bi-weekly and trying to add new if we're running into problems.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea just to, I don't mind the canceling the meetings on the holidays. And there are an awful lot of them. But I think that, I, I think it would be sort of a good idea to kind of pencil it in on the calendars sometimes. Because, you know, you might have something that comes up that's time-sensitive and then you need to meet. But yeah, I mean, what you said isn't a bad idea.
I'm sure. There's only three, if you look at the calendar, there's only three Mondays. Where'd they go? October 10th is one, January 17th.
Oh, you're talking after summer schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we have, we have the September, yeah, September 5th. So I might swell.
Right.
We still need to meet on the 6th. The coffee talk's gonna be on the 15th.
At least like Martin Luther King and some of the other ones, isn't there?
Yep, there's, there's two in January. There's gonna be one in April, but it's not in red because it's a Massachusetts holiday, not a federal holiday.
And is that Patriots' Day?
Yeah, and that would be.
Patriots' Day, and there'll be Juneteenth in June.
Yeah, Patriots' Day is a legal holiday in Massachusetts, so the 17th of April would be out.
I would, well, so this feels like micromanaging too. But then if we met on the 12th of September and moved coffee dock to the 22nd and not meet the Week of Labor Day, they'll see you.
Well, what is the question? I know there was a little discussion at your last meeting about the summer schedule, knowing that there is going to be an incoming town administrator. And, you know, that may not be until August. So I don't know if you wanted to discuss the summer schedule at this point and how you want to proceed with that.
Well, I don't mind doing as we have been doing in the summer, because usually there's not as many things to do.
So why don't we go ahead and revise the calendar for the coming fiscal year to to rejigger it like you, like you discussed. And on, on weeks that there's a Monday holiday, don't meet that week, but meet weekly, you know, weekly thereafter. Does that sound okay?
And then maybe we also, again, skip the weeks of coffee talks. That skips a few weeks on there. And so between holidays and coffee talk weeks, we do, we get some sort of weeks off. And then let's look at that, that looks like, because we don't have to vote on this day. This is for July 1st. We have another couple, several meetings before this has to be finalized. Yes, Mary?
So go every Monday, except for the weeks where there's a Monday holiday.
Right.
And there's only two coffee talks in there, but it used to be that the goal was to do a quarterly, but I only put two in there. So you said on the weeks that there's coffee talk, drop those Monday meetings. But I just want to make sure you know there's only two. So I presume you want to plug in two more, but.
We'll keep two and we'll worry, worry about putting those other two in.
Later.
As we get closer to them.
All right, I'll do another draft for next week's meeting.
Might, it might be nice to have the week of Christmas and New Year's off.
Well, Christmas is a Monday holiday, right? Because it falls on a Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Monday's off anyhow, because.
Right.
And, but if New Year's falls, follows the, does that follow the same?
Yep, so that's a Sunday holiday, so that means we, the town is not gonna have.
Well, we might have to, that would give you two weeks off in a row, though. I don't know.
Two weeks where a lot of things are closed. We can create a special meeting if we need to. Right. 19th, that means we're definitely gonna be on the 9th of January and probably meet on the 23rd of January.
And you could certainly call a meeting in between if, if needed.
Right.
Okay, does that give?
Well, so then that would be the 19th of December.
Yep.
Following that rule, you would not meet again until January 9th?
Correct.
And you'll have a pop-up meeting at some point when there's a quantum of work built up.
If there is during those two holiday weeks, if there's a quantum of work, we'll meet.
Okay.
Other discussion with this? I don't, didn't sound like we're ready for a vote, so I think that is ready to go. Now I have to find what I do with the agenda.
Maybe.
We can jump back up on the agenda to the Board of Health presentation about recycled product procurement policy. We bring Sue seems to be in the audience. Susan seems to be in the audience.
I'm kind of poking behind the scenes just to say, please unmute, please start your video. But she may have stepped away, so I'm not sure if she's literally there.
There she is.
Sorry, I'm used to having the controls. This no controls thing, I don't like. I like the power. Well, thank you for having me, Select Board. I'm here to request that you would approve, bless, or do whatever you guys do best with the buy recycle policy that's been put in front of you. The, the Board of Health is trying to apply for a grant to purchase a container to store mattresses and box springs. Because as of November 1st, we can no longer put mattresses and box springs in the waste stream. So we need a clean, dry place to store this stuff. And part of being able to apply for the grant is we need to have a buy recycle policy for the town. So I kind of borrowed and copied and modified one from Wes Boylston and presented that to you. And I don't know what's involved with your blessing of it. But if the Select Board could approve it, then we could get it up on the website. And I think that meets the requirements for me to go to the next step.
So Sue, what, what do you do when the container is full of mattresses?
Then we have to hire, we'll hire a trucking company. DP will come, but we have to have a vendor that's going to take them. So it's gonna cost us more, like everything else this past few months. We weren't given any options. It's like you can no longer do this. You better store them in place and find somebody to take them off your hands. And this company, there are companies out there that will literally take the mattresses apart and recycle all the goods.
I have heard that, yeah.
However, I would, we're also gonna recommend that if you're buying a new mattress, have the company you're buying your new mattress from come and take your old one away. That's what I did.
Yeah.
Because they're a pain, I mean, they're, they're heavy. They're a pain, you know, they're bulky, they're tough to, you're gonna have to drag them in the trailer. And then hopefully, when they, in the container, and then when they come, they have to drag them all out and haul them all away.
Sue, do you have an idea of cost either for the container or what it's gonna cost to haul this way? Or is it going to be, so if I brought my mattress down, am I responsible for taking it out of the car and putting it in? Or are people at the transfer station gonna help? And any liability, somebody gets hurt?
We haven't gotten that far. This was kind of, you know, this came up fairly quickly. So I decided to at least try to apply for it. But I tripped over the buy recycle policy before I could get a step further. We're, we're still waiting to hear pricing on what they're gonna charge us to haul things away. So we've left the cost that we would normally charge for a mattress. We've left that blank on our receipts for right now until we get pricing.
Well, it's probably a good idea to have a plan, because otherwise, I know no one in Berlin would do this, but you see them on the side of the road, so.
Yep. So I, I am taking notes right here. Who gets them out of the truck, van, car handling of it?
Yep.
Go ahead, Margaret.
So Sue, I appreciate you putting these, this policy together. I'll just give you a kind of a snapshot of what the Board typically does on new policy proposals. They usually kind of have a first reading, so to speak, and at the following meeting, they will approve a final version of the policy. Now, with the buy recycle procurement policy, there are a lot of things associated with recycling that add costs to the town. So I, again, I want to appreciate the items that you put on this particular policy that really are low-cost, low-cost items for the town. So it's not committing the town to, you know, to paying a premium for, you know, certain recycled products. There are a couple of other things in the state's model policy that I think might, the town might want to consider. So purchases of office equipment, being Energy Star rated or something similar to that. Just an energy-efficient products, which don't necessarily add a lot of cost. And the other thing is, on the model policy the state has, there's some guidance that departments should consider, should consider recycled content products such as outdoor fixtures and furnishings, including picnic tables, benches, et cetera. Those, because it's not a commitment that the town must do that, it's something I think that might, might help the policy and, you know, keeping the idea of, of buying recycled products in the forefront. So just a couple of thoughts.
I couldn't tick those. And submit, resubmit.
Okay.
So Sue, one other thing, when you get way farther down the road, you know, something to put in your noggin, I definitely make sure that you've got some type of announcement that you're going to make to the town to either put up on the town website, share it on Berlin Neighbors Connect, et cetera. Because I just don't want anybody to go down to the dump and be like, what? I gotta pay $8,000 to get rid of my mattress, so.
We, we will, as soon as we get a little further along in this process.
Yep.
I've heard the trailers. I think the grant that I want to apply for, I think will cover up to like $10,000 for a trailer.
Wow.
Or a container. I didn't know they were that expensive. But I know even an old, used container would probably, you know, the minimum it would run, it would be about $2,000. So I have to, and I've never gone shopping for a container. So hopefully Margaret might give me a few tips on how to shop for something like that and get price quotes and whatever. I'll make her a nice piece of chocolate cake.
I suspect you're gonna be able to find something on StateBit. We'll work together on that.
Okay. So that was the first piece of. So that was the first piece of why I approached you guys tonight. The second piece is I was, the board would like to request that you would appoint Paul McCalk and myself as signature authorized signatures for the state contract. In case we actually get the state grant, we need to be authorized signers so we can cash the check. And that is our request.
Okay, so Margaret, do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, you would need a motion to do that. And then on that contract, there's a there's an authorized signatory sheet as part of the state contract. Sue's and Paul's names will be noted there, and the chair of the Select Board typically signs that authorization sheet.
Okay. I'll make the motion to have both Paul McKelk and Sue Rigera as signatories. Do you want me to just say in general, because maybe something else will pop?
Well, they're they're contract authorized signatories for this particular grant. Any additional grant would need authorization all over again.
Okay, so it would be for this grant.
Seconded. Thank you.
More discussion on that motion, then we can go back, I think, a little bit to the procurement policy if you need to. If not, we'll vote on the allowing them to be signatories. Hawkins Eye?
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Is there any more sort of commentary? Want to get back to Susan about the the recycled product procurement policy?
Thanks for getting in front of it. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm just trying to, Paul asked me to look into it, which was really, I don't know if Paul's listening. He said, I'd like to attempt to do that grant thing. Okay? And dumped it in my lap and ran. So I've never done a grant.
I can tell you from some of the state grants that my office does, this type of policy is being asked for in more and more grants. So I think having this policy will not just help this grant, but will help other grants that go on. Peg?
Good.
Sue, Sue, was there timing? Oh, look at that. I put my hand up. I didn't mean to. Is there timing on this? I didn't see anything.
Timing for the policy?
No, timing when the when we need to start doing this and, you know, putting our mattresses in a safe spot.
November first. So I'm trying to get a little bit ahead of it. I have to send the we have to apply within, I think, by the June fifteenth for the grant. And so I've been trying to like work all pieces at the same time.
We are past the seven thirty for for Sunny, but if you have other things to wrap up for commentary for for Susan, so that potentially in the next meeting or two, we can approve a policy.
Yeah. I'll add the two points that I'll add the two points that I discussed earlier to your draft policy and send it off to you, Sue, to look at and to the board to look at.
Awesome.
If we get, Margaret, if you could add, if the if we're currently doing anything in town offices about recycling, I think adding it, especially if we're doing something already, adding that to this policy would also make it look better, like we will pilot recycle paper if we do.
Any incentive is great.
So stay in touch with Margaret, Sue.
I hope so.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Board. Good night.
Good night.
I think that next on the agenda is the seven thirty, we're running several minutes late, but River Bridge Development Agreement, Traffic Mitigation, you know, the various stuff, and Chris and Matt Sunny are joining us today. Welcome, both of you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much for having us in this evening. We're here to talk about the bridge over Northbrook. As you may recall, the development agreement we entered into with the town before we built River Bridge obligated us to do two things with regard to the bridge. One was to take off the outer beams of the vehicle bridge, put wider ones on using the existing foundation. And that would allow widening the the deck of the bridge by two and a half feet. And it was thought back when we started that that would be sufficient to make Northbrook operate in a better way for vehicle traffic. The other thing the development agreement obligated us to do was to build a pedestrian bridge for pedestrians and bicyclists right next to the vehicle bridge and connect it to the sidewalks at River Bridge near where the cafe is and carry those sidewalks all the way down past the driveway to the community garden and to the end of the the municipal border, which is not quite at, but close to Donald Lynch Boulevard. And so we have been working with a committee that has been helping to plan for this work. At the last town meeting, the deadlines for these were adjusted so that the pedestrian bridge and sidewalk work is supposed to be done by December eleventh of this year, twenty twenty two. The design for the widening of the vehicle bridge is supposed to be done by December eleventh, twenty twenty three, and the actual work by December eleventh, twenty twenty four. And we've met now monthly with a representative of your board, with Fred Cummings from from the Highway Department, and with a consultant the town has hired, a VHB, primarily on the design of the pedestrian bridge, because that one is supposed to be implemented sooner. And we've met five or six times. And over the course of those meetings, we have developed an existing conditions plan, which shows all the way from the cafe to Donald Lynch Boulevard, the existing wetlands, the existing telephone poles, the location of the road and where the sidewalk would go. And we've done a site plan of how this pedestrian bridge would be situated to the east of the of the vehicle bridge. We've had Randy Waterman of Waterman Design Associates attend one of the meetings. He's been preparing the site plan, the existing conditions plan, and identifying where the wetlands are. We've contacted a bridge company called Contact, which produces a steel pedestrian bridge that is seven feet wide outside to outside and and six feet wide as the passageway that you would travel down if you were walking or bicycling across this bridge. And so we've been working very hard, but we've also realized a few things with the help of VHB and and Randy Waterman. It's a very tight fit staying within the road right of way. To place this pedestrian bridge adjacent to the vehicle bridge, there's only about two feet of clearance. And one concern is, is if we proceed with the pedestrian bridge, when when it comes time to begin work on the vehicle bridge, they may conflict, or there may not be enough room to work. And it is possible to lift the pedestrian bridge off and set it down nearby to do the work, so that might be solvable. The other thing is that the anticipated improvements to the vehicle bridge might not be enough. It might not meet today's requirements for what should be the width of of that vehicle bridge. So there have been some discussions about perhaps rethinking the approach and substituting in place of this work, the cash equivalent of installing the sidewalks and pedestrian bridge and the vehicle bridge. And allowing the Select Board to use those funds to plan a more holistic project that might include either larger alterations to the bridge, including a pedestrian bridge built into it, or replacing the bridge altogether. And we anticipated this the first time our development agreement was modified some years ago. We actually had town meeting approve the idea that your board could accept the equivalent in cash. So this really sort of came to a head at our last meeting, just a couple of weeks ago. And it was decided that Matt and I should visit your board and just talk this through a bit. The mechanism does exist for us to to make a cash payment. We do have a pretty good idea of the budget to put in the pedestrian bridge. And VHB, your consultant, is about to undertake examining what it would cost to make the widening improvement to the vehicle bridge. So we just wanted to join your meeting tonight and talk this through a little bit. I don't think anyone has a fixed sense of which direction we should go in. But but we wanted to come before you and just talk about this a little bit. I expect our committee is going to continue to meet early every month until we figure out the right way we want to move on this. But we just wanted to present this to you and and get some feedback from.
Thank you, Chris. Chris or Peg, do you have questions or comments?
Well, I've been a part of the group, the subgroup that is meeting with Chris and Matt, and so I I think maybe one idea would be for our subgroup to meet and have a discussion too. Not only the Select Board members, but this subgroup, which they may have some ideas that would be helpful too. I I can't really think of anything else, Chris.
I was gonna go to Peg first, and then I can go over to you, Margaret, if that's okay.
I'm I'm gonna ask the board if we can take this under advisement. There's a lot of verbal discussion. I would like to see information in writing. I'm not prepared at this time to ask any questions, because there is no solid information to look at, so that's where I am headed on this.
Margaret?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, as Chris said, VHB is looking at the cost. What VHB is looking at the cost of is the full project scope over Northbrook. So the bridge deck widening, pedestrian and bicycle bridge, and the sidewalk connections and upgrades.
And if I could, then I believe then what what the thought would be is that once we have some sort of numbers, but we being, I think, that advisory group has some numbers of what that bridge might cost, then it is sort of a a discussion that group to figure out what they think might be the right proposal to bring forward to us of, but instead of the River Bridge actually taking control of that sort of building a bridge that we propose, you know, writing a check of X dollar amount. And then we can see where that sort of negotiation goes. You're right, until we know what those numbers are, I don't know how much more, it's 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 it needs to be done tonight. It is, as you point out, in the development agreement, that that is within the realm of possibilities. And I don't think we're talking super long before we have at least ballpark numbers. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I don't have a I don't have a specific timeline from VHB, and I can certainly ask, but I don't I don't think it's a I don't think it's a huge project that's going to take a long time.
Well, I think you're talking weeks, not months, in other words.
I think so.
Yeah. Is there anything else you want? Anyone else who wants to add to this for the moment? I I I thank you much for getting us up to speed. And where this is at, and it's happy to see that this section of the agreement is actually, some progress has been moving on. Even though, I mean, I didn't know that. I knew people were meeting, but not how much has been done in the background. It's appreciated to see. It's come a lot further than I thought it had. So thanks a lot for coming and getting us an update, and we'll I'll keep this when we do agenda setting, you know, we'll we'll keep this to make sure this doesn't get dropped.
Good. Well, you're welcome, and thank thank you for having us in.
Okay.
We'll see you the first week of June.
Yes, we will, Chris. Thanks. Take care.
Bye.
See, I gotta go back to the agenda again. That is for sort of the hearings. We've done the town minister report. We are now on the last item under Old Business, TA Search Updates.
Yes, okay. So as far as I know, and I haven't double checked the site yet, the TA job ad has been posted on MRI's site. They are proceeding with sending it off to the MMA, to New England Manager Associations to try to get the best response possible. They are also they're also going to be here a week from today on the seventeenth to do in-person interviews of town officials and Select Board members. I hope you don't mind. I've given them your contact information. In case you aren't able to make it, they they would they would want to call you and talk with you individually. So they are going to be here next Tuesday from nine AM to four PM conducting interviews. I alerted department heads of that this morning. And I will also notify chairs of of boards committees, hopefully a school administration official, maybe the superintendent, maybe the business manager, but somebody who works with the town administrator. I think their input would be valuable as well. So the other thing that I have, and I think I'm being a little bit proactive on this, is that we talked about a a screening committee. The screening committee would be responsible for interviewing semifinalists after MRI does a whole comprehensive screening of the resumes and does the entire first part of the process. The screening committee I've recommended be composed of the Finance Committee Chair or the second in line, or second in rank on the Finance Committee, or another Finance Committee designee, because the town administrator regularly works with the Finance Committee. The Personnel Committee Chair, Claire Pond, or another designee from the Personnel Committee, because that's another group that the TA works frequently with. The Capital Planning Committee Chair, or another Capital Planning Committee designee, because that's another, all all three of these committees are actually cited in the act as the town, you know, as working with the town administrator. Community Preservation Committee Chair and Planning Board Member and former member of the Board of Selectmen TA Act Committee, Tim Wheeler, if he's willing to serve on it. ZBA Chair Lynn Ryan, Building Commissioner and Insurance Advisory Committee Chair Richard Hanks, and Town Accountant June Poland. So seven members, up to seven members, hopefully will have a designee from each. And I'm just looking for the board's approval for me to appoint the committee so that we don't have to comply with the open meeting law and executive session and all of that for the committee to do its work.
I think that sounds like a great, good group. Do you would you like a motion tonight?
I I would appreciate that. If we can just settle, I can notify everybody and see if we can line them up.
How's this? So moved.
Mary, I can share it with you later.
I I'm not gonna repeat all those names or anything. I'm just gonna say Margaret has permission to move forward with that.
And to Scott's, to Scott, I know Scott made a comment at one of the prior meetings about the big three. I am going to, and I'm going to assure that MRI has interviews with all three of the big three department heads.
Margaret, you want, I thought you had a good rationale about why they might not be on the hiring committee right now. Do you want to just share that?
Yeah, two out of the three big three department heads are brand new. And the other is going to be outgoing in December, so I I I wanted, I wanted to assure that, you know, we're also, our our department heads are also representing continuity and experience with the town administrators. So but again, they will get to have have a conversation with MRI.
Just to let you know, I looked on the MMA website, there are nine town administrator openings. Berlin, let's see, Milton, Brookline, Norfolk, West Boylston, just over the border, Long Meadow. Margaret, that's up by your way.
Doesn't matter.
Oh, I know. Sherburne, Blue Hill, Maine, Town of Florida. So talk about being in the upper, like, most corner of the state, so.
We're definitely gonna have our. Florida, Mass. It's always sunny in Florida.
Yep. So we're definitely gonna have our competition out there for opportunities for folks to come to us, but I will second Chris's so moved motion.
Is there any more discussion? Before voting, Margaret, if you have, if some of those seven are, it's hard to tell, and come back to us, I I think we'd be open for replacements, but I think we have time if 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 it turns out. If it turns out that those seven, there's still openings after those seven people. There's not other discussion, we'll vote on that motion uh to allow Margaret to appoint that committee. Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
And that is it for old business. Onto new business, uh approved job descriptions, highway labor driver and. Uh, highway H M E O labor driver mechanic.
Right, two highway positions. We're getting ready to post the ads for these. Um, so the first one, H M E O driver labor mechanic. Is uh Fred's former position, and the truck driver laborer job ad will be to fill um the vacancy that Dylan left. Um, so uh I know that the uh truck driver laborer job description was approved not too long ago, but Fred has made some small changes to that. Um, including a requirement for a commercial or a CDL B driver's license.
Just tell us what H M E O stands.
Oh, I'm sorry, heavy machinery equipment operator. I should, we should spell that out, I suppose.
Well, I thought maybe.
The job title three lines long, but yes. Um, where are these at with personnel, Margaret?
The per personnel has approved both. As amended.
So um I would make a motion to approve the highway laborer driver. And the H M E O labor driver mechanic job descriptions.
I will second.
Saying, uh, motion second, uh, I don't see other discussion, uh, we'll vote Hawkins, aye.
If aye.
I have a question. Um, Margaret, are there any resumes that could potentially, you've already talked to, to fill these, or what do you think?
There are potential current employees who might be interested in in doing, you know. I I don't, I I say it, I say it in plural. I I don't know how many, but um.
Okay. Alright, um, stone, aye. Sorry about that.
Margaret, are there any uh year-end appropriation transfers at the moment?
No, not tonight. Maybe next time.
Our next agenda item then is to accept the anonymous gift of a garden tiller to the Agricultural Commission's community garden.
Ooh, so moved.
Indeed, bring it on. I'm tired of, tired of raking. Yay.
Like fun.
Uh, if there's not more discussion besides yay, um, Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, yay.
Alright, Mary, if you could just let Carl, if you could please just let Carl know the board has approved or accepted the donation, we'll be all set to go.
Um, the next agenda item is uh requesting permission from the Berlin Lions Club for a toll road on Route sixty-two Central Street. Between Carter and Pleasant Streets on Saturday, May twenty-first from eight AM to noon uh for an annual fundraiser of theirs.
And I would make a motion to approve the Berlin Lions Toll Road.
Uh, and there's been, I'm trying to like get to the feedback. Everyone's all good on the feedback?
Yes, police department um is going to have to provide a detail on that, obviously, because of the location.
Uh, does it, do you have another question, Peg, or?
No, I'm gonna sneeze, but go ahead.
Uh, quickly then, uh, Hawkins, aye.
Oh, aye. Don't I, sorry about that.
Uh, appointments. Uh, the first one is appoint James Wheeler to a regular seat in the Agricultural Commission for the balance of the present term through. Uh, five thirty-one twenty-two and renew the term through five thirty-one twenty-five.
Uh, so moved.
And seconded, thank you, James.
Yes, well, thank you, James. Uh, we'll vote Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
And then continuing all the good news, uh, it is uh appointing Robert Holmes, the Recreation Committee. To fill a vacancy through December, uh, March, sorry, I can't remember what five is. Five is May, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
See, and you thought this job was easy. Uh, seconded.
Uh, discussion, we're discussion, I will vote Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
I've just been focusing really hard as I close the tabs for all these handouts, but I'm not closing the agenda and then being lost for the rest of the meeting. Um, is there any TA notices to uh tend to appoint positions?
Not tonight, hopefully soon.
Uh, so let's go on to the approved Highland Ridge L A U application to D H C D for the local action units.
Okay, I talked about this a little bit at the beginning of the meeting. This is to um, this is to apply. For L A U designation of ten of the sixty-six units at Highland Ridge. Um, these ten units will either be at fifty percent of the median income or eighty percent. So they will be low and moderate income units, and they will all be at Highland Ridge. No substitutions.
And local action units is the L A U, and for those who don't know what D H C D is.
Oh, Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, there we go.
And then with Margaret, when you say that fifty percent or eighty percent, that is some are at fifty percent and some are eighty percent. It's not like that someone gets to choose which one is which is.
Yeah, there are going to be, there's gonna be a mix, apparently. That's, that's my understanding of this.
It is mine as well, I was just clarifying from.
Mary's raising her hand.
For signature by the chair, please.
Oh, thank you.
It's sitting on the table in awaiting the chair's signature.
Okay.
Oh, that, that's me now, isn't it?
Yep, you gotta get down there.
I can stop in on my way to work tomorrow.
Um, so I would make the, where are we? I would make the motion to approve the Highland Ridge L A U application to D H C D.
Seconded.
I think we're ready to vote. Uh, Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
And not to say anything about previous agenda items tonight, but for the highlight of the night. The last agenda item uh on our our open meeting is awarding the twenty twenty-two. Uh-oh, my turn, Mabel Felton Marble Memorial Scholarship.
Yay.
I've got two years left, having to say that, prefer I mess it up, so.
Um, so. Uh, this is for, we have to decide, well, there is only one applicant, but we have to decide. Um, how much we're going to award this applicant. And um, Mary, could you just let us know one more time what is available?
Uh, four thousand dollars.
And that, that includes leaving.
Four thousand dollars leaves those two other issues, uh, leaves enough money behind to make sure the other two. Um, scholarships that are outstanding for payment, uh, that that, you know, that they they can submit their grades when they're ready, and then they can be paid.
So it sounded like from the information that um the applicant, and I, I don't know if I can say their, her name. But she's going to uh quite an expensive school, of course, they all are now. Um, but what, what was it, fifty-three thousand? Or fifty-seven thousand?
See, I I now think that fifty-seven thousand for college these days is actually.
You're right, you're right.
I find it amazing that they're going to the College of Worcester, but it's not.
I know.
Our Worcester, it's, it's Worcester. Our local Worcester, but uh.
Right.
Um, and then our awards last year were how much, if I could ask?
A thousand each.
Yeah.
But there were, but there were what, three, three of them?
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't know how um the board feels. Um. I I think because there's only one applicant, I'm not quite sure why. Um, I would be in favor of maybe giving this applicant two thousand dollars. We'll give.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that's fair. Of course, I wanted to give her all of it, but um.
I was in the, by the way, I was in the middle between those two numbers.
Yes.
So then why don't we settle and vote and uh, how about twenty-five hundred rock, paper, scissors?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Um, and so I think there is a motion second to give the applicant. Uh, uh, who I think we're protecting a name of for the moment, but uh twenty-five hundred dollars for, oh, I closed it. Oh, the Mabel Felton Marble Memorial Scholarship.
There you go, well done.
Uh, Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Uh, congratulations, and uh we can get the award letter out and the conditions uh now, and hopefully she will. That will help her better afford uh school.
She sounded like she was very, doing very well in school right now.
Yes, yes, I I was quite impressed by the application.
Yeah, so was I.
And thank you again to uh the donations to keep this scholarship going and benefit the young women of Berlin. And appreciate, appreciate it.
I was gonna ask Mary, um, could, do you, if you send a letter to Sylvia and Judith. Do you include like some information about the student?
Yeah, they'll be, she'll, they'll be copied on her application, so they can see.
Cool, alright, good. Alright.
Um, that gets us to sort of up to uh executive session, which I think we're going into tonight. Um, I think we only have the, are we doing more than just approval of executive session minutes in that?
Um, yeah, so reason number seven to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. So that one, the chair is going to have to declare that it could have a detrimental effect. That's on a real estate matter.
Um, yes, so uh, uh, I'm just gonna read this paragraph, that's gonna be fine, since I don't know. The board will enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Two A. Seven to review and approve prior executive session minutes and to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Uh, as the chair is declaring that it may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation uh uh position of the select board.
And. And then roll call vote.
Required, so Hawkins, aye.
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Um, and that we are, sorry, I should have said that we will, we will adjourn from executive session. Uh, does that change anybody's vote? And then uh for those people who are in the audience, uh, because we uh, the, some limitations on Zoom sessions at town, we don't actually have a separate room to go to. Um, and so we will enter executive session once the audience members have have sort of left the meeting. Uh, uh, so that we can have our our moments, and I think that gives those who are in the select board a moment to grab a glass.
Alright, see you in a sec.